Good evening. Welcome to our regular Hamlet Board. We're pleased to see everyone here tonight. Hope everyone signed in on the sign-in sheet. At this time, I'm calling, we'll call the meeting to order and we'll ask for your invitation by Councilman Cluess, please.
Let us pray. Most gracious and kind, loving God, we thank you for the day that you've given us. Thank you for the opportunity to conduct business for the City of Hamlet. We would ask for your guidance and direction as, Lord, we need your help in all the decisions, all the matters, Lord, as it don't affect just one person, it affects many people. And we need your help, Lord, and we pray that you would guide and direct us, help us, Lord, to do what is pleasing in your sight, and we give you the praise, honor, and glory for all things. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. At this time, gentlemen, you have before you the agenda for tonight. Are there any additions, deletions, or changes on there?
Did you get the addition to the closed session?
Yes.
Are there, are you looking at an agenda with 21 items?
Yes.
I'm just trying to make sure you have the right one.
It's been changed several times.
Yeah.
We approve this agenda with 21 items on it.
Motion from Councilman Pressler.
Second.
Second.
One question.
Yes.
With the 21 items, does that, mine shows 21, but not the addition to the closed session?
It's got item 18.
But there was a separate.
Oh, okay. Yeah, there's an addition on there for personnel matter, under item 18.
Okay. Johnson.
The addition for personnel matter. Discuss. Under item 18, close session.
I will add that to you.
Okay.
The personnel statute.
I'll rescind that and include 18 and 18A, which is two separate matters for closed session. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, sir.
One being employment matter and one being a attorney-client privilege matter. I make that motion, we approve that, with that amendment.
Second.
That's second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? You also have before you a set of closed-session minutes from June the 10th. I have a motion on those.
Mayor, I ask that we remove the April closed-session meeting minutes. The attorney's going to be looking over some of those for us before we approve them, but we'll keep June and last month's meeting in there.
Have a motion.
Second.
That's second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? At this time, we will recognize any comments from the people that are here tonight, as long as it doesn't have anything to do with what's on the agenda tonight. If you've got something that you need to bring before us other than what's on the agenda, we recognize you at this time. Does anyone have anything? If not, we'll close your comments. We do, okay. Ron Mayo.
I just come up to say, on behalf of the Hamlet Business Development, I'm the president, and we had a very successful 4th of July, and I just want to let the council and the city staff, and let them know, let y'all know that the police did a very good job and the fire department. We're very pleased, they blocked off the street. Chief, I want to thank you on behalf of the Hamlet Business Development, and also Ms. Miranda did an outstanding job helping us. A lot happened, a lot of y'all were downtown, but I just wanted to say thank you, let you know we had a good time, and cruising was a success, and more things are happening, but we just appreciate y'all and want to let y'all know.
And we appreciate what Hamlet Business Development has done also. Thank you. Miranda, thank you, both chiefs, appreciate everything. Does anyone else have anything at this time? At this time, before I go on to the next item, being that we're going to be in a closed session toward the end, I wanted to bring up a little matter that has occurred. Yesterday evening late, there was a young lady that was bitten by a dog up on McDonald Avenue near Calvary Baptist Church. Now, we've had an ongoing problem up there, we have been aware of it, we have been in contact with the dog wardens before it went to the Sheriff's Department, and since the Sheriff's Department, Mark Gullidge and I have been in contact several times about trying to apprehend these animals. And just last week, Mark and I met and talked about that same issue. And one of the two biggest problems we've had up there is they have tried to catch them in traps, but they wouldn't go to the traps, and then when you tried to catch them, they would run, so they were not able to catch them. In addition to that, they've been out there real early in the morning and sometimes late at night after dark. So, the city has been trying to get this issue taken care of. The police department has responded every time they've gotten a complaint, but getting the dog warden here in the time that somebody calls, you know, they may be on the other side of the county or what have you. We have looked at the issue about the City of Hamlet hiring a dog warden, but as y'all are aware, we don't have the money at this time to pay somebody additionally and be able to provide the truck and everything on it. But we believe that the Sheriff's Department now is doing an excellent job. They have two wardens at this time, and they're going to have one more on board shortly. They do respond every time the police department calls them. They were lucky last night, they caught the first two dogs, and later on this morning they got the last one. So, they've been hard at work at it. We're sorry that it happened, and we're having problems around town just like they're having around the rest of the county. But we're aware of it, and we're doing the best we can right now with it. And as I said, I've been in touch with Mark Gullidge frequently, and the sheriff also since time, since January. So, we'll stay on top of this, and hopefully it'll get better. Thank you. At this time, gentlemen, on item number six, presentation by Ms. Sandra C. from CSX Communications, Affairs, and Safety. Sandra, we're glad to have you with us tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here. The first thing that was asked at some people for CSX is, what did we do? I said, we didn't do anything. We don't want to get in the habit of first coming here if we, you know, have done something. And I just want to say that I want to reach out and say thank you for allowing us to stretch and grow in your community. We appreciate that. Thank you for allowing us to be here, and I know at times we seem to be a little disruptive, and we don't take that lightly. We don't. With that being said, I don't know if you are aware that there is a number that you can call for non-emergencies. There are numbers that are located at the crossings for emergencies that are designated, as your emergency personnel will know. If emergencies do happen at crossings, there are those numbers. However, for non-emergencies, there is 877-TellCSX. So, I wanted to make sure, because I know at times in communities, they don't know that if there are block crossings, or horn noise concerns, or vegetation issues, that how do I reach CSX? You can actually go to a place in Jacksonville, Florida, that there's someone sitting at a phone, that there's someone there that'll answer, yes. Or, tell CSX at CSX.com, and you can get someone there. So, what will happen is, they will actually send you to, whether it's the signals department, mechanical department, if it belongs to me, if the mayor would need something, city manager would need something, it will get sent directly to me. Wherever it would need to go to, that issue would be addressed. So, I wanted to make sure that the constituents know that any type of issue would be addressed, that CSX has that place for you to go. Another outlet for the community would be Operation Lifesaver. Now, Operation Lifesaver is a national nonprofit organization that CSX partners with. And you may have seen me in a booth out at the Seaboard Festival, and I've been here several years, working with Miranda at the Seaboard Festival, which I love, working there, at the Seaboard Festival, but on behalf of Operation Lifesaver. And it basically focuses on safety at railroad crossings. And I know Miranda is doing a coloring contest right now, and has done really great with that. And basically with Operation Lifesaver, we use volunteers within the, in the community, different organizations, and it's not just CSX, it's Norfolk Southern, it's other railroads, it's state governments, anyone that would want to be an authorized presenter. And we used to be, they used to be certified, now they're authorized, but anybody, schoolteachers, we go into classrooms, we go into churches, and it doesn't matter where we go, just to spread the message of safety. So, that's also available. Right now, they're doing a campaign called See Tracks Think Train. So, if you wanted to go there on the website, seetracksthinktrain.org, that's where you'll be able to see and get more information on that, and it's a great program. I'm going to leave some of that information with Miranda over at the visitor's center. So, I'm going to leave some pins with her, some other information, some statistics right now of what's going on in North Carolina, the rate is a little high for North Carolina as far as incidents happening and that is occurring at crossings, and how we can get that down. So, speaking of Operation Lifesaver, anyone that's in the community in Hamlet that would like to come aboard on, you know, the committee of Operation Lifesaver and help with that, help us in Operation Lifesaver to focus on safety at railroad crossings, we would love to have you. Because I've spoke to you at Seaboard Festival and other locations here in Hamlet, and you have some wonderful input, some great input, and love to have you. Another thing that we focused on, and you've been a part of here in Hamlet, is down at the City Lake Park, and when we did the outreach there and done some painting and things like that, and that worked out so wonderful. If you want to visit beyondarails.org, you can kind of see where we've done other projects in other places. If you know of any nonprofit organizations that might want grants and things like that, that's another place that you can look to see what we've done in the past and that we can be doing in the future. So, if you know of anyone that may want a grant in the future, or volunteers and things like that, please go and look at that website. Again, that's beyondarails.org. Also, those who like NASCAR, and I'm not sure who does, CSX also sponsors, and you may have seen it, David Reagan number 34, and I will leave some of these with Miranda as well. I break for trains, and it's our Play It Safe Around Railroad Tracks campaign. And so, you'll probably see this on his car, and I know in Charlotte in October, that race is coming up. So, those of you in Hamlet that will be going to that race, you will see this, you will see this on his car, so play it safe. So, if you would, those that are around you, just let them know and talk about that message of playing it safe around railroad tracks, since you're coming from a railroad town, we're depending upon you to express that message. Again, you know, those are just some of the things that, you know, we do. I know coming, I'm sixth-generation railroader, and coming from a railroad family, and being from a railroad town myself, I know you focus on it, I focus on it, it's just very important. And I do appreciate everything that you do here in the community, we appreciate everything that you do for us as a team. Angie Everett, who had planned to be here, but something came up in her schedule, she was promoted to Assistant Division Manager for the Florence Division. And she also expressed that she wanted to be here tonight, but unfortunately she wasn't able to be here. We would like to tell you that if anything comes up that you need us for, please let us know. We always want to be good neighbors to the Hamlet community. With that being said, let me know if there's anything that I can do. Are there any concerns that you can think of, Mayor?
Not that I'm aware of. Jonathan, did you have some comment?
I, can I, you got something? I was going to say pass that information on to our webpage maintainer or facilitator and maybe create a link. I think it's important enough on our webpage to have something involving CSX, because I mean, so much going on in this town, and it could link to these phone numbers and webpages and things like that, if we have problems or if somebody has problems with anything with CSX. I think they should have a tab on our webpage, I mean, because that's vital to our existence here in Hamlet.
Absolutely.
Yeah, railroad's what we are.
I just wanted to get some information to you. Like I said, this is more information than anything tonight.
Anybody else?
Sandra, I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Before you step down, I have a proclamation that I need to read. Recognizing the 60th anniversary of the Hamlet Classification Yard. Whereas Hamlet, North Carolina has served as a historically important railroad hub for the former Seaboard Airline Railroad and CSX, and whereas Seaboard Airline Railroad chose to continue this tradition by building a modern freight classification yard in Hamlet, North Carolina in 1954. And whereas the Hamlet Classification Yard was described at its 1955 dedication ceremony by John W. Smith as a symbol of the forward look of all American industry, and whereas the Hamlet Classification Yard is now celebrating its 60th anniversary as a major freight terminal where five important lines converge to make a center where all other points of the CSX system can be quickly reached. And whereas after 60 years of the railroad industry at the Hamlet Classification Yard, the recent CSX expansion of the facility serves as a firm expression of CSX's faith in the future of the railroad in this community, and whereas CSX stands firm in its commitment to Hamlet as a corporate partner, where it thereby significantly contributing to the local quality of life, and whereas CSX serves as a positive corporate citizen in areas of safety, community, environment, and wellness through local volunteerism and corporate giving. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Bill Bayless, join with the members of the Hamlet City Council, along with the citizens of Hamlet, in expressing our recognition to CSX on the 60th anniversary of the Hamlet Classification Yard, and appreciation for their commitment to serving the communities in which they work. In witness whereof, I have here under set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Hamlet to be affixed this 8th day of July, 2014. Next item of business, item number eight, is a preview of the new city website by our IT Director, Zach Garner.
If you'll just bear with me a second, I've got to get the projector on and all that. Find my mouse. Turn my mouse pad on. All right, there we go. I present to you the new City of Hamlet website. Now, some of the new things you'll notice, lot cleaner look, have a fixed background in here, a slider, and also if you look down here, one of the first things I noticed on the old website was the contact form. It wasn't really your typical contact form, it basically just linked to Tammy's email. And this one actually gives us a form that we can fill out. You can, you know, type in your information, it's going to tell me that field's required. And then you can send it on to me, basically, and then, you know, I'll just send it wherever it needs to be sent. Now, some other features that I think the community will find interesting is, I kind of redid the calendar and embedded a Google Calendar that'll just make keeping up with events a lot easier. Now, if you look on here, there's a lot of events here. Ninety-nine percent of those events are from the senior center. So, if you come over here, say you don't want to look at those events, you can just turn them off. If you say, can turn all of these off if you just want to look at the senior center events. Pretty self-explanatory, checkboxes. A neat feature, I think, is if you click on an event, you can have your little information here, and since we're working with Google, you can also click, and it'll take you straight to the Google map. If you come over here, you can have yourself a delightful little street view. Now, some other things we have, we've also updated all of the forms so that you can actually fill them out online. And we've also updated them with the city logo. Same thing with the careers, you have our open positions here. Some of this may not be quite up to date, because this is still our preview, there's still some kinks that need to be gotten out of it, but I hope to have it all up and live by the end of the month. Have our council minutes down here, and basically you just click on the ones that you want. Another neat feature, and Gail Strickland pretty much did all of the legwork for this, is in conjunction with the Richmond County GIS, we now have the zoning parcel viewer. And as you can see here, it's zoomed way out, but if you zoom in a little closer, maybe Supposed to break it down by color and by zoning. Oh, well, it must be something on the GIS end. All right, so let's go back here. Another thing that I added here, if you look down here, I think a lot of people know that we have a Facebook account, but all these link to all of our social media outlets, Google+ Most people don't know what Google+ is, but it's basically Facebook for Google. And another neat tool that comes along with your Google+ account is all of these business tools, and it'll allow us to do things like actually track our page views and where these views are coming from, returning visitors, stuff like that. Basically try to see how well the website's working. And we also have our Twitter, for those of us who like to tweet. And we have our Independence Day events. And one thing I added was information for current residents and future residents, basic stuff like your water rates, garbage pickup. But, yeah, that's pretty much it. One thing that a lot of people won't notice, but I'll notice because I'm a nerd, is I even added the little icon up here in your top. Whereas on the old website, you just had this. But anyway, that's pretty much it. Like I said, hopefully I'll have it ready to go by end of the month, and feel free, shoot me a message with any comments, concerns, anything really, just let me know, I want to get some feedback, that way we can make it, you know, better serve the community.
Zach, it'd be a good idea to put businesses on there, and they could, and put their local businesses where you could, if they've got webpages.
Yeah.
Could do something like that to promote, you know, what we've got downtown, and if people are looking to, well, they've already got five doughnut shops, or they've got six picture frame shops, or whatever. I mean, they could look on there and see what we've got, promote business, and then make them hot if you click on it, if they've got a webpage.
Yeah, yep, that would be a great idea. Anything else?
I think this looks really good.
Really good job.
It should have been done, I'd say, years ago, but some things are still new, but that looks really good.
Pull that down just a little bit, Zach. There was a number on there a while ago, I said 91 degrees. Can you do anything about that?
That is completely out of my hands, unfortunately.
Zach, how easy is it to get to this site, like through a Google search?
Um, I mean, pretty easy.
City of Hamlet?
No, a lot of things pop up with it.
City of Hamlet or Hamlet or Carolina.
And, of course, this is still on the old site, but...
So, it does come up if somebody just would Google it?
But, yeah, like I said, just, you know, anyone, really just give me your feedback, let me know what you like. One of the next things I'm going to try to do with this is make it what you call, what they call a responsive site, which basically means, instead of having a separate site for your mobile devices, or a separate site for your desktop devices, the site will basically adjust itself depending on what the resolution of the device is. And that's something I'm just getting into. I'm working right now on the senior center site, and I'm going to go ahead and make it that way and then come back to this, so.
About codes, Tammy? At some point, can we put city codes on there?
Oh, yeah.
Are we getting close to getting them electronic?
We are, during the process of getting everything confirmed, all the updates to it, and council will be presenting this ordinance to approve everything altogether, collect the way, and then we can get it on there.
Come like a big thick Bible, huh?
Yeah, yes.
Zach, what do you go to now to get to the new site, or is it up here?
Well, I have it kind of like in a testing domain that I use, that, I mean, if you want to go to it right now, you can. you want to go to it right now, you can. Now, it's nowhere, it's not as complete as what you just saw.
Oh, okay. You'll let us know when it's ready to go.
Yeah.
Yep.
At this time, we'll move on to old business. Item number nine, have a public hearing for the solar farm ordinance. Prior to this date, we had not had a solar farm ordinance, and we have gone to our experts and asked them to get us a solar farm ordinance, which we have had sitting for the last thirty days. At this time, we've got a public hearing on it, and it is open at this time. And if anyone has any comments about this ordinance, please come forward and tell us
Hi, I'm Maggie Clark, and I'm the Government Affairs Associate for the North Carolina Sustainable Energy Association, also known as NCSEA. We advocate for policies that create economic growth across North Carolina through investment in renewable energy and energy efficiency. While FLS Energy is a member of NCSEA, I'm not representing them here tonight, but instead speaking about the template solar ordinance that our organization co-authored with the assistance of many stakeholders. The original template ordinance was created through a partnership between NCSEA and the North Carolina Solar Center at North Carolina State University. The purpose of this template ordinance was to consult with a wide variety of stakeholders to create a tool and resource for municipalities and counties. During a six-month drafting process, state and local government officials, solar developers and installers, landowners, the Federal Aviation Association, agricultural interest groups, and legal representatives met to discuss the solar development process and possible effects on the community. Other states' applicable solar ordinances were also researched, making this version a best practice reference. The American Planning Association has even adopted this template ordinance as the go-to solar zoning document, giving its carefully curated metrics credibility on the national level. NCSEA is very pleased to see that the majority of Hamlet's proposed ordinance mirrors very closely the template ordinance. NCSEA firmly believes that every North Carolina county should promote solar projects as they create an increase in the county's tax base without adding costly infrastructure. I would like to make three brief points about Hamlet's city, the City of Hamlet's proposed ordinance, and how it differences from the template ordinance and may hinder solar development. The one hundred and twenty-five-foot setback for the parcel line setback for a Level Two system is a much tougher standard than we've seen in most ordinances. The template ordinance recommends a fifty-foot setback for Level Three systems in low-density residential areas and even shorter distance setbacks for agricultural districts. For example, it's thirty feet in the front, fifteen on the side, and twenty-five in the rear. Requiring, and then my second point is, requiring six-foot-tall opaque or semi-opaque safety fencing plus mature evergreen buffer in addition to barbed wire above fencing could be overly burdensome for solar developers. The cost of opaque and semi-opaque fencing is approximately three dollars more expensive per foot than regular galvanized steel. By using the vegetative buffer requirements proposed in the template ordinance, this could alleviate the need for opaque and semi-opaque fencing. And then third, the decommissioning plan states that a system will be decommissioned if it does not produce power for six months. This timeframe could prove onerous in the case of an extreme weather event or long-term repair system update, especially when taking into consideration the claim processing time for insurance companies. Thank you for your time.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Paul.
My name is Greg Ness. I'm with FLS Energy. I'm also a shareholder and the Assistant General Counsel of that company. And our affiliate, FLS Energy Finance, is also a landowner in the City of Hamlet. We own some property on Freeman Mill Road. First off, I'd like to just extend my appreciation to the mayor and the council and the City of Hamlet for taking the time to review the template ordinance and just kind of reviewing best practices and being proactive in terms of this somewhat unique type of development in the state of North Carolina and also a kind of a growing aspect of the North Carolina economy. So I appreciate y'all's time on that. Just in general, I just wanted to, you know, basically verify Maggie's three points. Those are definitely agreeable to FLS Energy, Inc. in terms of practicality with developing a solar farm in terms of best practices. I've been in the industry for about five years now. I'm sort of an old hat, you know, especially in the southeast and in North Carolina. And I've been involved in a multitude of similar hearings and also specific CUP and rezoning hearings addressing solar energy. And, you know, I'd just like to take just a few minutes, you know, to address just a couple of key concerns that frequently come up, you know, from the community and from, you know, from email and correspondence related to such a hearing. And namely, the first one, I get this quite a bit, it's in terms of the noise level that solar energy projects generate. And I, you know, the first time I got that was a couple of years ago, and I thought to myself, well, what is that, you know, where is that concern coming from? And so I, you know, I worked with Gail a little bit, actually, recently. And I went out there and I checked some of our existing solar farms. I talked to our engineers and our designers. I'm kind of a nerd at heart, too, so I was kind of trying to figure out, well, what is the true basis of this concern that I'm hearing from people and on the internet and various venues? And really, the only moving part on a solar farm, at least the ones that we do, it's maybe a little bit different out west, but it's called the inverter. And what that does, it converts the sunlight from DC to AC current. And in each inverter, there's a very small fan that spins to kind of cool the equipment inside the box. And, you know, just to kind of put it in terms of reference, the sound of inverter is almost like, you know, going into the kitchen at night and kind of hearing the hum of a refrigerator, sort of that kind of quiet, nice, white noise. And so I had some landowners and some, you know, FLS employees go up to the sites, and we sort of did a, you know, a fact test, and just to make sure that was the case, and we did a, you know, step-by-step walk back. And essentially, what we found out was that it's about a ten-foot to twenty-foot max distance where you can really hear that sort of white noise. So that's kind of what you're working with with a typical solar farm. And then secondarily, another question I get quite a bit is regarding glare. And with glare, that was one that kind of made me scratch my head a little bit. Because really, the basis of my company and sort of what pays my salary and most of the employees there is the sale of electricity. We capture the sunlight, convert it into electricity, and then sell it back to, you know, Duke Energy Progress, Dominion North Carolina, some of the other utilities. And so the whole point of a project is to just capture as much of that sunlight as possible. The way I see it from just an economic perspective is if there's any glare at all, I think of that in terms of lost revenue for the project and just decreased revenue for my employees and everybody else involved. So that's a real big no-no in the industry. We coat everything with anti-reflective coating. We, solar panels in general are always black, you know, just to make sure you absorb all that sunlight as possible and to just capture as much revenue as possible. So glare is not really an issue with the typical solar panel. It's just another analogy, it's almost like the glare you'd have off a lake or off just a standard window pane. That's about the amount of glare you'd get. And it's a little bit different with some of the big ones you kind of see in the news out west where they have two thousand, three thousand acres, and they use concentrating mirrors to capture the light and focus it onto a turbine generator. So it's an entirely different animal. So those are some of the two big ones that I hear quite a bit about, and I just wanted to come here today and just, you know, go ahead and just kind of, you know, talk you through some of the, just the nuances of solar projects and, you know, explain a few of those major concerns. But going back to specifics, I just really appreciate the time on this again. And I think overall, FLS Energy thinks, agrees that you've done a great job, and for the most part, the ordinance, you know, is in compliance with some of the template ordinances that have been adapted by similar jurisdictions, you know, for the protection of the public and also preserving the right to develop property. I think it's a kind of a healthy medium. The, I'd say the only point I'd like to make is that, just in general, on the different system sizings on Level One, Two, and Three, for the most part, what you're going to see is a Level Three system, and those are some of the larger ones that are being developed. And kind of as a basis, most solar farms nowadays are going to be between on twenty-five to a hundred-plus-acre parcels. And really, that's about capturing economies of scale, you know, allowing our better pricing with our vendors, kind of reacting toward the current lending environment, just really making a real tight economically viable project. And to do that, you really have to do the twenty-five-plus-acre projects. And each one of the ones that you see is kind of a result of many, many months of just painstaking work, you know, from, you know, we have over fifty employees at FLS, and each person there plays a critical component in kind of making those projects happen and making a really kind of best-in-practice showcase of what the industry's about. So again, you know, I'm in support of this ordinance, and, you know, I'm going to hang around afterwards, and if anybody has any questions, the mayor or any of the commissioners or any of the public, I'm happy to provide my email or phone number for follow-up. Appreciate your time, gentlemen.
Council, do you have any questions?
How much property did you purchase?
It's approximately fifty acres.
And how many panels would go on that property?
It's going to be roughly twenty thousand panels in total, so it'll cover roughly twenty-five to twenty-eight acres of that site.
One time, there was a talk going around those things could leak and contaminate. Is that unfounded? I know that was when Rob, there were some issues in Robinson County, I want to say a year and a half ago. They put several in over there, and all of a sudden, there was this stop to it. And I don't know if it was a scare going around, or was there an actual contamination or something like that?
So with a solar PV project, there's no fluids involved. I mean, other than, you know, your standard oiling of some of the gears every now and then for the inverter, just, you know, standard lubrications, WD-40 type.
There's nothing inside the panel.
Nothing inside, yeah. It's just flat silicon, so it's made of sand, and they compress it down into an extremely purified form.
Where's the land that you say you own in the city?
It's on Freeman Mill Road, sir.
Not in the city. It's not in the city.
It's not.
Is it in the city?
ETJ.
ETJ.
Anyone else got any other questions?
Do we have a map?
It's, I'm not sure about the business. It's pretty close.
Do we have a map showing the proposed site and then the...
It's right across from what used to be Somerset. I'm on Freeman Mill Road.
Yeah, how close is it? Holmes is what I'm thinking. What's the...
Right next door.
That back street, the back of Carolina or...
It's the middle of residential, it's zones residential.
Hold on just a minute. What we're...
It's zones industrial and agriculture.
What we're discussing tonight has nothing to do with whether or not there's going to be a solar farm down there. What we've got tonight is simply approving the ordinance.
Yep.
If an application is made at a later date, then we will address...
What I'm looking at, and I'm sure this is probably something you're going to address, is the setbacks. She mentioned earlier, they're a little bit extreme compared to, didn't that what the lady said, the setbacks? Didn't you say our setbacks were a little bit more?
Yeah, they're a hundred and twenty-five feet for a Level Two system. I don't know exactly. I'm pretty sure FLS Energy system would constitute as a Level Three system, so it would be a special use permit, which would be set by...
So they would go through a zoning process, and they would determine...
Do you want me to jump in, Mr. Pressler?
Please.
Yes, sir. So the speaker in the back was mostly correct. So, and this is something, as y'all are looking at this ordinance, is very important, the distinction between Level One, Two, and Three. And I'm going to actually refer y'all to Page Four, where the parcel line setback section is, and also Page Eight, Section Three, which talks about where in our table of permitted uses the solar energy systems will go.
Page Four.
Yes, sir. And we...
And Page Three.
It's Four and Eight, yep. So let's start with the setbacks. So Level One is essentially something that might be built into a home, you know, like a panel on top of a person's house. And that's allowed just with a zoning compliance permit, so our zoning administrator would issue that. Level Two is a larger ground-based system. And if you look on the first page, it can be located in several places. It can be located in the agricultural residential zoning district. And that would be anything that's not built into the level Two district. A project of any size in either our light industrial or heavy industrial is also considered a Level Two. And so, in that case, you do have a hundred and twenty-five-foot setback for Level Two. And if you have a project that meets those requirements and it's a Level Two, that's also with a zoning compliance permit. So that's something that our staff issues, and someone brings in a project that complies, there's no additional public hearing or anything like that, like you'd have with a special use permit. So that's significant, that that's issued at the staff level, and they don't have any discretion on that. Now, the Level Three, as a gentleman mentioned, and I think he's probably correct, is where most solar farm projects are going to end up, because that's anything in the agricultural residential zoning district over a half acre, and that's anything in the B-two district. And Level Three projects are not allowed in light industrial or heavy industrial. So I don't know the zoning of your property. Do you know, or Ms. Strickland, do you know?
It's residential.
All right.
Okay, so this would be a Level Three project. And what that means is that it's going to have to come through our special use permit process. And as the chart says, that's determined by a special use permit, so...
Can we back up one minute?
Yes, sir.
You said that Level Three is not allowed in light industry and heavy?
That's, yes, sir.
But it is allowed in residential.
It's allowed in the agricultural residential zoning district, yes, sir. So if you look on Page Eight, that's where it's laid out. And this is exactly why we have the public hearing. You all may decide you want to change the zoning districts proposed uses are allowed in or not. But if you look under Section Three, it's got, Level Three is allowed as a special use in agricultural residential and in the B-two zoning district. Those are the only areas that a Level Three is allowed. And that's only permitted with a special use permit, which means that, you know, when the Board of Adjustment considers a special use permit, they can decide how big they want the buffer to be.
Well, we have...
For the setback, excuse me.
That brings a good question. We've got a new industrial area down there that we're going to have available for development, and the Mark Street Development down there. If we had this put in down there, it's going to be right across the road from that industrial park. What effect is that going to have if it was put in first and then we get industrial? Is this going to stop us from putting something, heavy industrial industry down there?
I don't think so. I mean, there's nothing in here that limits the number of solar projects that are allowed in our jurisdiction. And simply allowing this use in the industrial zones doesn't mean that that's going to somehow prohibit other industrial uses from coming in. I mean, it could mean that someone could buy that property and put a solar farm in on the Mark Street property, but...
Or if we did.
Yes, sir.
Or if we did, for a way to generate revenue.
Interesting question, since the City of Hamlet is not in the electric generation business, is it?
You know, we bounce it around, bring it, thinking outside the box, there are ways to generate money. That, those, that area is not the best or easiest to get to. We talked about solar farm, and it was a way to generate monies for the city. Of course, this is across the street, a mile away from where, or more from where they were talking about. This is prior to all this now. We haven't planned this. This is not something we're trying to circumvent what the crowd's here for. We were given that property, and we were thinking of ways...
Well, we may be given the property. We haven't acquired it.
Well...
Yes, sir.
We're working on that.
But on that, that'd be something I have to research, whether the city could do that or not, but I mean, certainly...
It hinges on what we do right here, though, because if we say we can do it, and they can't do it, this is going to be, could be battled down the road.
Possibly, although I don't see if it's simply based on where the zoning district, what zoning district is allowed in. I think for tonight, what's really important is understanding this distinction between Level Two and Three and understanding what's allowed with a zoning permit that's issued by our staff and what's allowed only with a special use permit. I mean, that, and I would say to you all, if you think there's something that needs a lot of oversight, something that may require some discretion, then it needs to be through the special use permit. something that may require some discretion, then it needs to be through the special use permit process.
How close can heavy industrial get to where the solar farm would be at? I mean, if level three can't be with heavy industrial, and we grew out on 177 down a little closer to where they're at, would that affect us being able to bring businesses in?
Well, you mean future solar businesses?
Well, not solar, just industry.
Well, again, I mean, this only, when you talk about what's allowed in the table of permitted uses, this is just an additional use in the light industrial and heavy industrial zones. So it doesn't affect other existing uses in any way.
So how close could an industry be to the solar farm?
I don't know the answer. I think it would just be, you know, they would, so if you have an industry that's locating, they would just have to meet the setback requirements on their property. There's nothing in this ordinance that affects proposed uses off-site. So this ordinance only deals with how far setback from the property line a solar farm would have to be on its property.
It'd just have to be zoned differently.
I think that's right.
I just have a problem with, we're allowing something in a residential area that we won't allow in an industrial area.
Yeah, that's my problem, too.
I mean, that's the problem I have with it. I know, but it's going to have an acre, correct? Okay.
If you're on page three, the definitions, and you go down to level two. Now, this is the way I understood the planning board to, that they wanted. Level two was for residential agriculture in less than a half acre. Light industry or heavy industry, it could be any size would be permitted, and that would be that it would be issued by a zoning compliance here at City Hall. Any size could go in industrial, I-1 or I-2.
Which means they could put it on the...
They could put it on you.
Yes.
Yeah.
Because that's industrial, and that's where most, you find most of your solar farms are. So in I-1 and I-2, the planning board did not see an issue with that. As long as it met the setbacks that they provided there, then they felt like I-1 and I-2 would be the place. However, knowing that there might be some other areas around town where they might consider a solar farm, that's when they went to level three. But because of the being residential agriculture, being their homes around, or being business areas, that's the reason they said for the special use permit, where it would go before the Board of Adjustment, a public hearing, just like we're having now, and it would be determined at that time. So it is allowed, Tony, in I-1 and I-2, okay?
Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
In other words, a huge building like out there, the paper company or whatever, that allows them to put it on their roof?
If it's I-1, yeah, now, this does say now, ground-mounted, okay? Level two says, ground-mounted systems, not included in level one, that meet the restrictions listed below, okay?
As long as they meet setbacks.
Meet the setbacks, yeah, and an industrial section, yes, for I-1 or I-2, or RA-20 if they're putting for less than a half acre, okay?
I understand, but I still say there's a big difference in 20,000 panels in my backyard than one panel or big panels on top of an industry. That's my view, but...
What's his name? What's your name, sir?
You.
You. I thought you were squinting something back there. Greg Ness.
Greg Ness. How many other places do you have these things disclose the city limits and homes?
In general, most solar farms are located in agricultural residential areas. And that primarily has to do with, you know, A, the cost of land, and B, just avoiding conflicting uses from buildings next door, shading on the panels, and trying to find...
Basically, neither of ours' costs of their lands cheaper, but our housing property costs...
I'm just going to go out on a limb, and just, I'm not against entering tax value. I'm not against bringing in revenue, but I just don't see where this is going to benefit the city. I can't see any place in the city limits, the size that would be required for you to make money on this solar farm. So basically, what we're doing is we would be approving an ordinance that would allow someone to put something outside of the city limits but harm and hurt our citizens. And when I bought my property in the city, I was not, I didn't want to be around a horse farm, or, you know, any of these things. The ordinance is very well-written. I'm just, I'm not for it. Well, without the ordinance, we don't have any ground to stand on.
We're arguing about something right now.
I mean, we're talking about something now.
But if we approve this, like I understood what Gail said, then at the end of the day, someone could come in and apply and put this there, right?
Yep, it's a conditional use permit. The zoning board would have to make a decision.
Is there, Mr. Morpheus, is there any, do we have to have an ordinance that looks after the farms? I mean, I don't want to prevent someone from putting something on their house. I don't want to stop any individual in the town from doing this, but in my opinion, we're...
You have it, and you can control it, or you don't have it, and you can't control it.
And that's what I would say, is that right now, we don't have any specific use regulations for solar farms. So if we don't adopt some sort of solar ordinance, and then they submit an application, then the city would have to allow it somewhere, presumably with far fewer restrictions. But what I would suggest, if it's the majority of the board's opinion that this ordinance is too lenient, then you should add requirements that you think are appropriate. You could make all level two and three projects special use permits. You could, you know, add other requirements dealing with buffering and landscaping. I know that the first speaker had said she thought the landscaping and buffering or setback requirements are too stringent, but you may say, no, that's right for Hamlet. But I would say you need something in place, otherwise you don't have any regulations at all.
So you're saying this ordinance could be changed to where they come to Gail, and it's making a conditional use rather than...
Well, yeah, right now, all level two projects are approved at the staff level. You could make that a special use permit project as well. I probably wouldn't recommend that for level one, because that's building-mounted. It's like panels on someone's home. But level two and three, I think if you all wanted to do that, I mean, I see no problem with that.
Could we eliminate the farms from our...
You could remove it as a permitted use from some of your zoning districts. And in fact, what you have right now is since it's not allowed, well, it's not listed in our table of uses. Presumably, it's allowed in every zoning district. If you only allow it in certain districts, then it is not allowed in others. So let me be more specific. Suppose a majority of the board felt it wasn't appropriate in agricultural residential, you could remove that as one of the zones where it's allowed.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, just completely do away with that aspect of it. And I'll just tell you a brief little story. A gentleman came to me, owns a business, and it's in the county, it's outside of the city, but it's in our ETJ. And all he wants is he needs to put a building on his piece of property, so he can store stuff in his, for his business. Based taxes, can't do it because he's got a non-conforming structure. Not the same, but you've got someone that's trying to conduct a business, and we're putting stipulations on them basically because of the looks of the building. Basically. And now, I ride by these farms, and I mean, no offense to either one of y'all, but I ride by the farms. I see grass up high, you know, I see vehicles coming in and out. And I mean, these folks in the city, I mean, I'm just not a fan of it. I'm more towards the idea of having an ordinance that addresses the uses for individuals for their homes.
So what you're saying, Mr. Morpheus, we could actually do away with level two and level three within our corporate limits and our ETJ as far as that goes. Could we, or could we not?
I think, well...
It's case law, I mean, it's going to be case law.
My opinion would be that you need to allow essentially the ground-based solar farms somewhere. That's what level two and three are, is there's a ground-based uses. I would allow them somewhere, but where you allow it in town, you could restrict it if you wanted. You could limit it to the industrial zones. You could limit it just to heavy industrial if you wanted. I think it needs to be somewhere in town. You could also collapse this level two and three distinction, and you could impose specific setbacks. You could require that they all have to get special use permits. My strong recommendation would be that solar farms as a ground-mounted use be allowed somewhere in town, but to what extent is certainly up to your discretion.
Well, I'm like Jesse. I don't live too far from the area myself. I'm all for all kinds of energy, I mean, save money, you know, but there again, I don't want it in my backyard. You know, and I would hate for somebody to move in on me and do the same thing. And so, I just, and I don't know who would. Because the aesthetics of it, your property value has probably just gone down. I mean, you know, the benefit is, and I was a businessman, you're in business to make money. And that's what it's all about. And I don't have a problem with that. But the problem I have is you making money has just lowered the value of my property. And plus, the aesthetics, and I just, I don't know what we need to do, but I think some changes need to be made.
Hey, okay. I'm just going to speak in general terms. I think Hamlet, obviously, you guys have put your brains together and come up with a great ordinance so far, and you really do need to do what's best for your city. But I do work in Raleigh. I work kind of in the state solar industry. And I can just speak to a couple of the points that you've made, especially regarding property value. So, I mean, when you think solar, you obviously, well, I would think California. California has the number-one installed capacity of solar in the country right now. North Carolina is in the top four. It kind of depends on which study you're talking about. But North Carolina, this is a huge growing industry for our state. And basically, what it means is it translates to taxable dollars for your city.
Let me stop. It doesn't transfer the taxable dollars for us, does it? Because it's outside our ETJ, correct?
It's outside our...
Outside our state. Our corporate limits. It's outside our corporate limits, so we're not going to get anything.
I apologize, okay. Well, then I'll just talk about property values. I'll just, I'll wrap it up real quick, so... So there was a study done in California talking about property values surrounding solar farms, and overwhelmingly came back, it actually increased property values around solar farms. Yeah, it's kind of counterintuitive, but I'd be happy to follow up with that study if you're interested in saying...
Where was that at?
California.
You have any stats in North Carolina?
There haven't been any studies done in North Carolina, to my knowledge.
I don't think that you can compare California to North Carolina, with all...
Okay, thank you.
I'll retake, I don't think you can make that.
So we need to decide on this?
Let's see if anybody else has any comments. Anyone else got comments? Come up to the...
Come up to the mark.
Why would they buy the property before they got the okay to build a solar farm?
Beats me. I wouldn't have.
Do you have the answer?
Yeah, no, we had actually bought the property. It wasn't because of the pricing necessarily. It was basically because it's situated next to a really good interconnection point with the utility. And that's kind of how we do site selection. We have satellite imagery that pointed to that spot, and we looked around, and we said, well, this is, you know, a good 50-acre parcel. It's near, it's near some residential areas. But luckily, we know that we have enough space where we could come to the city, work with them on setbacks. I mean, it's got plenty of room to maneuver. Like I said, we only need 25 to 28 acres of that site. So what I had my engineers do was really design a really tight system, and had planned on going through the conditional use permit process initially. And then X, Y, and Z came up. I mean, I think some of the city officials could speak to that. But I said, well, that's fine, I'll just withdraw the application, then we can kind of work with the city of Hamlet to do this correctly, you know, for future developers as they come in to the city. So that was sort of the goal, you know, we were going to be the...
Yeah, absolutely.
Would you request that that land be zoned in the city?
Yeah, I would be open to that discussion, absolutely.
You mean annexed?
Annexed, yeah.
That's not going to make residents happy.
No, and that's not going to generate that much more money.
No, I'm just trying to make the point that he would be...
I mean, I certainly appreciate, you know, you all coming and what you have to offer, but just not at this location. I just, I just think it's a bad, it's a bad spot. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of area around here that, that would be fine, but it's just, and of course... I don't know, I don't know what California, of course, their, you know, their home values may have gone up. But in small Richmond County, no one's going to buy a home that that's in the backyard of, that's what they're going to see. I, it's just, you know...
Yeah, I appreciate your input.
And in total disclosure, what Councilman Pressler said, that we had talked about something like this, when we were given the land, it was mentioned for about 30 seconds up here. It was not discussed, anything like that. It was just mentioned up here at one brief moment, so it's not like the city's talking about doing this.
Yeah, well, use, and when we talked about that, I didn't want to restrict, or us do something to make us look crazy down the road.
Yeah.
Well, again, you know, like I said, the goal was to come here tonight, kind of describe the ordinance, and then also work with the residents on, you know, making a world-class solar farm that is far enough back, incorporates, you know, really heavy buffers, setbacks, and the like, and just to really do a, with some of the measures that we're planning on taking, I was hoping to make it work.
I just, I just want to ask, just out of curiosity, how far, have you, have you gone and measured? You know how far that just a buffer alone is going to be from the backyard ending of the property there?
Yeah, we had roughly, it was almost 300 feet built in, just to kind of preserve that frontage away from...
A football field?
Yeah, it's pretty, pretty much that distance. So it was, it was a very substantial buffer, above and beyond what we normally do, which is, you know, like Maggie said, roughly 25 to 50 feet. And the whole goal was, we were cognizant of that area, and we were trying to get a project in this area in a good location that could also kind of work with some of these measures that would, you know, not affect the property values and, you know, some of the aesthetics in that area.
But we still don't know that it would affect the property value. That's an assumption.
Yeah, again, I mean, it's assumption on both ends. There's really no, no evidence either way.
I mean, my opinion, a football field just sits far enough, just that, I know that's what kind of, where you normally put them. I know that's what it normally is, but I mean, that's, that's pretty close.
Let me ask you, do we have to adopt this ordinance tonight? Can we table it for further study and discussion? Or does it have to be done tonight?
No, it does not have to be done tonight.
If I could, sir, I would recommend that it be adopted tonight. And if the board at a later date decides that some of the standards need to be changed, that you change them. Remember, if you do not have a solar farm ordinance in place, and there are no regulations, it's a use permitted in any zoning district. So you could table it, Mr. Martin, but I would recommend against that, sir.
Along those lines, could we take some of this out that we are not happy with, and then discuss that and add to it, instead of someone come in, apply for a permit, and then I say, oh, no, you can't do that?
That's exactly right, Mr. Lewis. What you, let me follow what you're saying. You could remove it from a zoning district. You could make a standard more restrictive, and then say, well, we may loosen that or add it back into a zoning district at a later date. But if it's adopted tonight as permitted in a district, then it's permitted in the district until you amend the ordinance again, which would be a new zoning amendment.
Then I think what we need to do is remove it out of the residential district altogether. Can we do that?
Yes, you may, sir.
Could we say, remove it half a mile from the residential district? Three-quarters of a mile, nine-tenths of a mile?
You could. My suggestion for tonight, without having done any kind of GIS analysis, is that if you want to restrict the use further than the ordinance, you remove it from specific zoning districts, or you add a special use permit requirement. The issue I'd have with the buffering requirement is, without looking at a map, it's impossible to see if that has the effect of zoning it out of the jurisdiction. So a spacing requirement, sort of in the abstract, is lawful. But you wouldn't want something, give you an example, you wouldn't want something that says it has to be five miles from any home, because then it's just not allowed.
We don't go for a mile anyway, correct?
Well, and that's my point, sir. So I think you could do a spacing requirement. I'm not prepared to really give any opinion on what would be appropriate tonight. I'm not prepared to really give any opinion on what would be appropriate tonight. But I, I think you could remove it from a zoning district, could add a special use permit requirement, or two zoning districts, however you think appropriate.
As the city attorney, would you recommend us to adopt this as written tonight?
Mark, can we make the amendments?
Well, I recommend that you all adopt the ordinance tonight in some fashion. And I'm trying to count noses here, so I'm going to do my best. I don't have an opinion about whether this is appropriate or not for Hamlet, but I am hearing three members of our board having a very strong opinion about that. And what I would recommend is that a version of this ordinance be adopted that comes as close as possible to a majority of the board. And if I may, please tell me if I'm wrong, I'm hearing that you'd like to hear it removed from the agricultural residential zoning district, and you'd like to require all Level Two and Three uses be approved of the special use permit.
I agree with that.
And to put a finer point on it, if you remove it from the agricultural residential zoning district, it would not be permitted on the proposed site. Although, as Mr. Bayless said, that's not what's specifically in front of you tonight, but, I mean, that, that just is a reality.
I believe I like that.
I'd like to make a motion to that effect.
We'll have to do that when we get...
Yeah, you've got to close the public hearing.
I would like to see if we have any comments from planning and zoning. Anyone? Gail, did you have anything? Wendy, did you have something? Please come up. Come on up. Wendy Masagie.
I live in the affected area. Just to kind of give you, since you don't have a map, and I do have a map if you want to look at it, to show you, this property is almost a cutout with city limits almost all the way around it. Because if you go down where Rice Street curves, down where I live, those people there in that curve, their backyard is affected by it. But also, if you go down Freeman Mill Road where those new houses have been built, there's six or eight new houses there beside Somerset, that's city limits, too. This property's in between there. So, it's affected on numerous sites. And I just want you to be aware of that. If you want this map, I'd be glad to bring it up.
I know where it's at.
I know where it is. I've already looked it up.
Because we thought someone was going to do a residential area there, and they decided not to.
Yeah.
I know exactly where it's at.
Did anyone have any further comments at this time? Not, let me get back, none of them. If not, at this time, we'll close the public hearing on the solar farm ordinance. And Item 10 is, we will consider at this time adopting the solar farm ordinance, and whatever amendments or whatever y'all need to make, please make them at this time.
Can I just ask one last question? If we make the amendments that you have said that we made, the one in question, if there was an application or whatever for that, it would not be able to go there, correct?
I want to make sure that I've got the zoning on the, the proposed solar farm property as residential agricultural. Is that correct?
I don't hesitate in finding if it's RA twenty.
That's what we heard tonight. So, that being the case, that's correct.
Sorry, here, all right.
Yeah, so if you removed Level Three solar energy systems from the RA twenty, or the residential agricultural zone, it would not be allowed on that property. That's correct.
I make the motion that we adopt this with the changes that Mr. Morpheus has said.
Do you want to do special use permit on Level Two and Three?
Yeah, you said that, didn't you?
I did, yes, sir.
With, with all the amendments that he said.
I'll second it.
All right.
Can I ask for clarification?
Yes, I'd like for somebody to repeat what we just said.
Yeah, you need him.
So, we're taking out RA twenty, Level Three. Level Two's not allowed in the RA twenty.
Take your time, let's get it right.
Yeah, get it right the first time.
Just, the manager has a point of clarification. Level Two is also allowed as less than a half acre in size in the RA twenty. So, that would be something you all need to consider as well, if you wanted to remove Level Two and Three from the RA twenty altogether. You'd need to remove that as well, if they want to hold.
That was my question. So, on Level Two, on Page Three, we are removing Item Four, agriculture residential RA twenty, less than a half acre. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
How's that going to affect somebody with a house?
It's not.
Level, Level One.
Has to be roof mounted.
Roof mounted.
Roof mounted.
Yeah. Okay, because this is ground-mounted, Level Two. Okay, and so then, we're going over to Page Eight.
Yeah, I think the attorney has one.
Yeah. And one other thing, I don't know how it'd affect, but in the category of, let's be cautious, you, I would also recommend that you remove from Level One the ground-mounted on an area of up to 50% of the potential maximum footprint of the primary structure on the parcel, but no more than one acre. Simply because, while I'm pretty sure how that would play out, I can't say for sure, and I'd rather it be added back in response to a need than something that we didn't intend being allowed in. So, I'd also ask that that be removed.
Okay, all right. I tell you what, would it be appropriate to give you, like, maybe just a few minutes to write everything down so we...
Certainly.
So, we make sure that this is an official...
I think that would be.
And that way, there's nothing where we didn't say this, or we didn't say that.
If at some point, we needed to add it back in later, we could do that.
If we could just have a five-minute recess, I could be with the manager and Ms. Strickland.
Okay, if y'all don't mind, we will just call a five-minute recess. Everybody stand up and stretch your legs. Okay, we, at this time, the attorney's back, and we're ready to return the session. So, we will continue. At this point, there were some recommendations on some changes, and did I have a motion with the changes? Is that correct?
Would you like me to clarify the changes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I do, but I wanted to make sure that this was in conjunction with...
Do I need to withdraw that motion and hear this, and then make a new motion?
If you could, just to the record.
I'd like to withdraw the motion until the attorney comes up and gives us all the...
So, having met with our manager and our planning director, what we recommend is that the ordinance be adopted as written with the following changes. One, ground-mounted solar energy systems, Level One solar energy systems be removed completely from the ordinance. So, they show up in several places in the ordinance, but primarily, if you look on Page Three, it's the bullet point number two under Level One solar energy system. We also recommend that Level Two solar energy systems not be permitted in the agricultural residential zoning district. We also recommend that Level Three solar energy systems not be permitted in the agricultural residential zoning district. And we recommend that both Level Two and Three solar energy systems require a special use permit for approval.
At this time, I will make the motion to accept this ordinance as listed with the amendments by the city attorney.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McQueen.
Second.
Second by Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, all in favor. Thank you, I appreciate that. Ms. Clark, Mr. Ness, thank you for coming tonight. We do appreciate it. Okay, at this time, you have before you the contract for the acquisition of the Marks Creek Industrial Park property. We did approve that property to accept it from Marks Creek Corporation, and tonight we need to approve the contract. Do we have any, I have a motion on it.
I make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
I've got a motion.
Second.
Second from Tony. Are there any comments or anything on this? If not, this is the property down there on 177 behind Richmond Pines, along in that area. And this property has been within the Marks Creek Development Corporation for many, many years, and they have turned this property over to the City of Hamlet to be used for development. And any of the property that's sold, or any money that we recognize from that, goes back into the downtown Hamlet to make improvements in downtown Hamlet. So, that's the... So, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes, sir.
On this, I'll contact the real estate attorney who did the title work, the schedule of closing. We'll also need to get the Marks Creek Board to formally approve donating the property to the city, so we'll, we'll take care of that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I'll be available, whatever you need on that. Okay, at this time, we have... Item number 12, need to appoint a, excuse me, recognition of achievements in new officers. What do I have there?
We have something from the police.
Oh, okay, so I, thank you. That one went by me. I saw it, and I said, "Wait a minute, what is it?" Police chief, do you have somebody tonight? Okay, fire chief.
We both have somebody tonight. First, I would first, I wanted to introduce our newest employee with the Hamlet Fire Department.
Well, you get the mic.
Does that get... He said he can pick it up, I was already asking.
We can't, you can't hear.
Mr. John DeWitt is our newest employee at the Hamlet Fire Department. Stand up, please. John replaces... John replaces Matt Simmons that left Fire Department and moved to Ohio with his wife for her development of her career, and they moved to Ohio several months ago, and we've had John about two months. And he comes from the City of Rockingham Fire Department as a full-time firefighter, and was born up in the Elbe area, and was a volunteer fireman with Mountain Creek Fire Department for many years. So, we glad to have him.
Good to have John. Chief Tucker, I believe you have somebody that might have an achievement.
Yes, sir, we have an achievement that we wanted to recognize. Eddie Smith, which is now a detective with the police department, has been a detective almost, I guess, two years now. A little over a year ago, we enrolled him into the Criminal Investigation Certificate Program at the North Carolina Justice Academy. That program consists of several classes of different type of investigations, and you have to accumulate over 500 hours to, to finish that program. And Eddie has completed that, and let me just read you this plaque here. "North Carolina Justice Academy issues this certificate thereby certifying that Clyde Edward Smith has completed the Criminal Investigation Certificate Program this 27th day of May 2014, and it's signed by our Attorney General, Roy Cooper."
Glad you made that presentation. Eddie, thank you for your hard work. Appreciate that.
Congratulations.
Okay, at this time, we need to make an appointment from the council to the Hamlet ABC Board. This is a position that Ms. Covington held, and it expired in June of this year. Do I have any, have a motion on that from somebody?
When do they meet?
Where did Wendy go? I was looking for. It's during the day.
During the day.
It's not an evening meeting. I do know that.
I nominate Eddie. Mark, if you're willing.
Maybe some more?
Sorry.
I didn't hear you.
I nominate you, if you would, if you're willing to accept that appointment. They meet during the daytime, and you might have a more flexible schedule than, than some of us. I'm just, recommendation.
If it's all right with board, I would accept.
Okay. Got a motion from Councilman Pressler?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you for that, Eddie. The next item, item number 14, is an appointment to the Hamlet Opera House Board. You have a list of people on, in front of you that have put in application. Do we have a recommendation on that?
How many are we appointing, Brett?
Just, just one at this time.
Move that we appoint Ms. Lynn Blake to this position with the Opera House Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, if y'all will let Ms. Blake know.
Have we, a question on that, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Have we already appointed the base board? Didn't we appoint the...
Yes, we've got five people. This will make sense.
Okay, so we, nobody left? This is just another, another position?
No, that's right. We're just working on, working on trying to get it up to speed, and we'll be having our first meeting next week.
Mayor, I think this will be the fifth person. I think we are going to four.
Fifth person, yeah, okay. You're right. Thank you. Yeah, okay. At this time, we are looking at an appointment with Council, Representative Lumber River Council of Governments. Councilman Cluus has been doing this for several years. He has been elected by all the other people in the council to be the chairperson for this coming year for the Lumber River Council of Governments, and that is a real benefit to us. And I would ask at this time, what your wishes are, council?
I move to reappoint Mr. Cluus back to the COG.
Okay, I got a motion.
Second.
A second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pressler. And I, I mean, Mr. Cluus, it's really, I tell you, that's really something. Out of seven counties and all the municipalities and the county governments, he got elected to be the chairperson, so that looks really, really good to City of Hamlet. And that, we need all the good we can get. At this time, we'd ask for approval on the tax releases, which is enclosure number five.
Make a motion, will you approve the tax releases as presented?
I got a motion.
Second.
A second.
Sorry, that came out weak.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. At this time, prior to the manager's comments, I need to see, chief, did you have any comments? Not, fire chief?
Yes, sir.
Okay, police chief?
I was just going to report that we ended baseball season and express thanks to all the parents and coaches that made that happen, and all the players that worked hard and had a good season. Also, that we're doing soccer registrations right now. That's going on until August the first, and our late registrations are August the fourth through the eighth. And the last thing is that we're having a Parks and Recreation Golf Tournament at Lockhaven on August the 23rd. It's an 8:00 AM golf tournament, and any of you that own businesses or no-business owners that like to sponsor holes or put some teams in, have all the information, Miranda or myself, you can get it from us.
Tell them what it's, tell them what it's for.
We, we're going to try to build a train-themed playground. We have some ideas picked out, and once we raise the dollar amount that we need, then we're going to try to make us a train-themed playground in Hamlet.
Location Depot?
I'm sorry.
Depot?
We haven't settled on a location yet. We've, I've talked about this to several people around town, and I've heard Depot, I've heard the corner of Bowers Field, the little triangle here. I've heard several locations, so we're just going to do the fundraisers now, and maybe that'll be something we let the town decide where they think it should be, or you guys.
The reason I asked, I thought I heard Miranda say that they were trying to do this project for the, for the playground equipment to be used at the depot in that little grassy area, but...
Like I said, as far as locations, I'm not real sure, Mr. Martin.
There's probably plenty of room, probably, for it.
Yeah, there is. Also, we, we appreciate the fact that you and Doc did a fantastic job getting a new big flag put up at the ballpark and getting it lighted.
That was all done. He did it all.
It looks good. It really does.
I just want to compliment on the baseball season. I was, I had a child involved in it, and it was very well-run and very well-attended, and y'all did a really good job, and for, and for Mitch to step up and coach the team
y'all did a really good job, and for Mitch to step up and coach the team also. He coached the team. Yeah, and he coached ref, and I think he coached the All-Star team. So we appreciate, you've got some good coaches out there now, and those teams really, you could see it in the improvement. We got a good program going on with our baseball team.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Zach, do you have anything for us tonight, other than the presentation? Okay, thank you. Gail, did you have anything? Robert Brown? I have to say how much we appreciate what you folks have done down there at Sewer Plant to save us all that money and getting that thing fixed. We were looking at maybe something over $20,000, and y'all got it cut back some, and we appreciate that. That's good work, it shows the people we have. Billy, did you have anything for us tonight? We appreciate everything you've done on the streets and all, everything's looking good, and we appreciate that. Jill? Tammy? Appreciate everything, yeah, we appreciate everything y'all have done, thank you so much, and y'all made the city run while the city manager was out. At this time, we'll ask for city manager's comment.
I will be brief, as I am playing catch-up, but hats off to my top-notch staff for filling in the gap during my personal leave the last few months, and hats off to my guys and girls for doing an excellent job in continuing with our slogan, "The Little Town That Does." So we're looking forward to this upcoming fiscal year and getting things done and continuing with forward progress. Glad to be back.
Mr. Morpheus, did you have any comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, I would ask for a motion to go into closed session, and we're going to discuss some matters within the attorney-client privilege, and this is going to be dealing with trying to get an update on the SBI report and on the crushed vehicles. And in addition to that, we have one personnel matter to discuss. Do I need a motion?
Motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in closing, okay? Okay, we have a motion to make from the closed session, and I want to make that motion.
Mayor, I'll make that motion. We're going to ask our city attorney to look into the shucks of the 23 crushed cars, and we're going to also ask our attorney to call the SBI to look at the report, to see where they're at. We want to go ahead and try to get that to a close and find out where we are. Following that, in our August 12th meeting, we're looking at contacting an outside investigator regarding the administrative side of the house, the scope of the tolling policy, and the crushed cars. That's my motion for our attorney to take care of.
Got a second? Got a second? Any comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. And as far as personnel issue, we didn't take any action that would need a vote on. And at this time, I'd ask for comments from council, I'll start with Mr. Pressler.
I'd just like to thank the town, especially PD and Fire Department, fireworks display 4th July downtown. Miranda, the downtown activities that we had with the Hamlet Business Association, well-attended, I thought. It was really good. Mitch, I already thanked you for baseball, good season, and I'd like to welcome the city manager back, and thank Tammy and Jill through that budget process, that got us through that, got us through that. Some tough days there, tough hours spent on that, I'd like to thank them also, but welcome back.
Mr. McQueen?
Just like to ask Rodney to actively investigate any issues of dogs running around in the city. Sheriff's Department's willing to work with us, work with them very closely, and let's see if we can't get these dogs picked up. Owners' fine, decided, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I'd like also to thank Tammy, and Jill, and Gail, and Edna, and anybody else who helped while the city manager wasn't here, and it is good to have her back, good to see her back with us. And police and fire, done a great job 4th of July. Mitch, you're always busy, you've got the most kids of anybody I've ever seen.
Not to have any kids.
Not to have any at all, you've got the most, so we appreciate all the hard work of all the department heads, Robert, the work y'all done down at the sewer plant saving some money, we appreciate all that. Thank all their input.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Martin?
Well, I just reiterate what others have already said, but the fireworks display and the activities they had downtown really brought in a tremendous crowd. I don't know how many, but it was in thousands, and I hope we can continue that throughout the years. Other than that, that's it.
Jonathan?
I won't repeat everything that's been said, but I will echo what everyone has said. I want to personally thank Zach for the website, I really like that, I think that looks really good, that's way overdue, certainly appreciate that. This is my first year, I missed the 4th of July celebration in many, many years, but my wife and I decided we needed a break, not from Hamlet, but from just work. So I hate I wasn't there, but I'm certainly glad that it sounds like it turned out to be really nice, and we'll be there next year.
The water, like, city water, city lake, that dam, when we're going to have that fixed? That's dropped quite a bit. Any idea on that?
It's fixed, they replaced the boards.
It's going to drought.
Tuesday, Wednesday, last week, they replaced the boards that were damaged, and it's just caused wet head rain, you know, it's going to take a while to get back up.
So, okay, I appreciate everybody that stuck with us tonight, y'all are great about coming, you come every week, every month, too, and we appreciate that. I, again, want to thank Miranda and all of the people that did it, David and everybody, police department did all the good work down there for 4th of July, really made it a success. It looked like one of the things that was the most successful was that water slide down there. Well, those kids just really had a blast with that. But we've got a good bunch of guys up here on this council, they're working hard, they've all got opinions, and they're working very hard to come together on this. We're trying to get the pass behind us and move forward, and we're working hard at it, so thank you, guys, I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody, that's all I've got for tonight, I would entertain...
Make a motion, we close.
Motion to adjourn?